Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to another meeting of the Inkster City Council. Today is Monday, August 21st, 2023, and the time is 7:02 PM. Before we get started, Pastor, I'm sorry, Pastor Reverend Williams, prayer, please?
Let us pray. Father God, we come no other way but lean on your everlasting love. Father, we thank you for the people of the city of Inkster who showed up tonight to force their concerns. Father, we just want you to know that as we lift your name up, that you also touch us and guide us and let this city be moved by your speed. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, so I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilman Williams.
Yeah.
Mayor Protim Howard.
Here.
Councilman Shaw.
Here.
Councilman Shizum.
Here.
Councilwoman Watley.
Present.
Councilwoman Washington. She'll be tardy. And for the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
Okay, you have a call.
All right, moving right into approval of the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
The support.
Support.
For second.
Second.
Sorry, this is, all right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it, motion carries. Moving right into consent agenda, I'm sorry, presentation. I see my good friend there, Director, Director Aaron Cooper. Inkster Housing, how are you today, sir?
All right.
Doing wonderful, wonderful. You have any of your commissioners with you here, too?
I do.
Please recognize them for the record, please.
Commissioners. Stand and be recognized. Don't worry about it. Commissioner Moore, resident commissioner.
Yes.
And Commissioner Crowe.
Awesome. Good, good, good. You guys have been.
One of our resident councilmen.
Oh, yeah. Good. You guys have been doing an excellent job over in housing. Excited about the progress?
Thank you.
All right, what you have for us today?
Um, well, we did a presentation, uh, seating had, just a quick video, I should say. First of all, thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Council for having us today. Honest to you. We just wanted to show.
I've now been at the House Commission for. My name is Aaron Cooper. I'm the executive director for the Inkster Housing Commission. I've now been at the House Commission for approximately two years.
My name is Greg Chazette. I've been a board member since October of 2002. My present role is the chairman of the board.
The mission of Inkster Housing Commission is to enrich lives by building inclusive communities and empowering families for long-term economic success.
Some of the key accomplishments for 2022 would be our development of the strategic. She planned those operations and some of those much. Had not took it out in time, so I was a great help.
Over the course of the next five years, we've been fortunate enough to receive two grants that were very important to our success. One is for radon. Inkster has one of the highest levels of radon in Wayne County. And so through HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, they afforded us a half a million dollar grant for the mitigation of that. We also received $250,000 grant for safety and security. That's also something that was awesome and instrumental to ensure that our residents felt safe and secure. We'll be using those funds to install cameras, improve lighting, and just general improvements to the property to help our residents feel safe. Our Resident Service Department is key. That's the department that really works hands-on with our residents, helping them to achieve self-sufficiency. Two programs that we offer, one being our ROST program, the other being our FSS program. ROST stands for Resident Opportunity and Self-Sufficiency. The other stands for Family Self-Sufficiency. These programs offer a multitude of options for our residents and opportunities, one being financial literacy, the other being homeownership. For our seniors, we offer programs that simply just help them understand about banking or using computer systems. I'm truly excited to share the $100 million invested that the Inkster Housing Commission is going to invest within the city of Inkster over the next 10 years. We have an operating budget of $10 million a year, all federal funds. Those federal funds go right into the community, whether it be through our housing assistance payments to our landlords, whether it be through programs for job readiness, through our Section 3 programs, or just to maintain our affordable housing properties.
What we need to achieve as though would be the collaboration of all these stakeholders. We need the city and the city council to be on board. We need the developers to understand the unique financing agreements that we need for our projects to be closed. We also need the citizens and the residents to have a certain level of collaboration. It takes some time and work through these issues to bring this beautiful project to fruition.
But, yeah, we just wanted to thank you all, you other citizens. I mean, we, you know, we're a government entity. We can be very bureaucratic, and I understand it's frustrating. It can be frustrating for our residents, it can be frustrating for the community, but we do the best that we can, and, you know, I think we have a really good team on board. Sorry. I think we have a really good team on board led by our commissioners. You all have been very pleasurable to work with, as far as the city, the police. And I know we have our struggles, but we try to make sure we're transparent in what we do. We have our events. This was our second annual Resident Appreciation Day. And it's something that we'll do every year. Every year that I'm here, we're going to do something to show appreciation, because we know it can be tough. But we do, again, we do the best that we can in working with our partners. And so we just want to thank you all, because you guys have been here and supported us. So thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Watley?
Yeah, usually we get T-shirts when people thank. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. No, I asked you last time to speak to your SOS program that comes to the city of Inkster and spends a whole day there doing things that usually people have to make an appointment now to do at the Secretary of State's office?
Yes.
Or whatever. So that was one of the things that I wanted you to elaborate on, because I sent that out to, I think, about 700 people.
Okay.
Between the ICAN and the Watsonia Park and some other places.
Sure.
I wanted you to speak to that.
Absolutely. I think it's August 30th, I believe, I think it's the 30th, that we are having the Secretary of State. And I know you mentioned it as well as yourself, Mary, to try to make sure we let you all know if you want to combine or collaborate, or you want us to have it somewhere where it's open, where you all can be involved or some, you know, you can let us know. We haven't finalized it, but I'm pretty sure it's the 30th of August. First time we didn't get a good turnout, I think we just didn't get the word out. So I want to make sure, you know, everybody is aware, because that's important, you know? Not licensing, things like that is one of the main causes for us, you know, as African-Americans in terms of violations that prohibit us from having, getting jobs and access to different jobs, something simple as license violations. So we want to make sure we can eliminate that type of barrier, if possible.
Director, can you talk a little bit more about your cameras? Because we know it's been a lot going on in housing as it relates to several shootings that have occurred.
Yes, sir.
And we know that you've been working really closely with the Chief of Police. Unfortunately, the chief couldn't be here tonight. He's actually on the road tonight. But we do have our community liaison here, Walter Cooper, that's here, of course, that you work closely with. Talk a little bit about that and how long you think that process is going to take?
Yeah, Mayor, so, you know, cameras are, technology is a really delicate thing. And again, I think I mentioned a little bit, we're, you know, we're bureaucracy, we're government, so procuring things can be a little longer than your private competitors or what have you. So the procurement process that we had to go through. So our solicitation will be out within, probably by the end of this month. And we've had some walkthroughs, many of different companies. I think some of the companies that have worked with the city have came through. So I've been working with the chief to make sure we have the same types of system, so they have access, where they don't have to come on-site, they can look at the access from their command center, from their phones, or what have you. So make sure we have the right product is what was important for us. And so with some of the most recent events, you know, I'm trying to expedite that process, but unfortunately, we still have to go through the procurement process. Our goal is to have cameras starting to be installed this year with, depending on the weather, how bad the weather get, it may pause certain, but that would be our goal as far as a large camera project. But in the interim, what we're doing is I found some funds to do some, some more, a quicker product than the big solicitation. So we actually have a lighting improvement job that'll be starting this month at Parkside, as well as some, I hate to say temporary cameras, but they're not the long-term camera project that we really want. But because of the need, I feel there's something that we just have to expedite and do something for the now. Sometimes we can kind of wait long because of some of the processes we have to go through. I mean, I just, I don't, I just don't want our residents to have to wait that long. So we're going to do some more kind of impromptu cameras right now and working with Officer Hall, who has been a great addition to the team. So I thank you all and thank the chief, you know, for allowing him to be a part of our team. So we have a long-term project, which you're referring to, but we're going to have a short-term project that's going to start here soon, because we need to just get some more securities and things in place.
Have you set a date yet for your town hall? I know that the last time we spoke, we talked about a town hall as relates to safety. And then also, too, we want to make sure that we extend it to the surrounding area as it relates to those residences in that area for them to come out, too.
Yeah, absolutely. So originally, we were looking at this Friday, Mayor, to have something this Friday. But I think we're going to wait till next week. I want to get some of these kind of temporary, again, I'm going to use that word loosely. I like to start that project, because I want to be able to actually tell the people, this is what's going on, instead of, here's what's about to come. So I'm really pushing to get that started, like ASAP. And we have some of the supplies in hand now. So probably next week is when we'll actually have kind of like the town hall, because I want to be able to give, give the people something. And I want them to be able to see some things actually occurring.
How will we get that out to the residents again in that area? Because a lot of folks are actually here tonight as it relates to, again, what's been happening in that area. How do we get that word out so they can come to that town hall and kind of see some of the things that we're talking about?
Yeah, so, you know, we'll get it out to our residents, obviously, the same kind of manners that we do. We'll get it to the city, make sure the city is aware. And also, I have some actual citizens that are actually here that I speak with quite frequently that I know if I tell them, they're going to spread the word. And I think that's important, having those relationships, of course, with our residents, but also non-residents of Inkster Housing, because we're a part of the community. It's not just the public housing, it's the entire community.
That's right.
So I know that, you know, once I get something official, a date, I'll get it to them as well as everyone else here.
Okay. Mayor?
It is August 30th. From 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, the Secretary of State. It's at the office there at 4500. It says first-time driver's license or IDs, renewed driver license or IDs, transfer titles, apply for disability. There's tons of things you can do, whereas before you, I mean, whereas now you have to make an appointment at the Secretary of State's office. And this is right in the community there.
Ball going in.
Right, exactly. So, and I have a number here. Did you want me to go ahead and give that out? Okay, it says you can contact Charlotte Coachman at 313-561-2419. That's Charlotte Coachman, 313-561-2419. And I went the last time, and it was, it was great. There was nobody there when I got there, like you were saying. So let's get the word out, because this is a resource we can all use.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Right. Anything else?
Did you speak to the officer that you all have now when you were talking about safety and stuff like that?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
We in contact much daily.
There he is.
Yeah, 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 we speak on the daily, Councilwoman, and like I said, he's a great addition. Your whole team is great. The whole team is great, you know?
Yeah, I'm a particular fan of Officer Hall. He does great work. He really does. Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you. I was going to, I was going to ask, and then while he was talking, it was the video presentation available. And I said, let me get on YouTube and look, and I found it, just in case we all wanted to share it with our constituency. So I found it. I don't know if you all have it or not. If not, I'll email it to you guys.
That's awesome.
What?
Email. Yes.
Oh, okay.
With a video presentation that he just did.
Okay.
Great job. And I did see one of your other commissioners walk in, Commissioner Miller?
Commissioner Miller, yeah.
All right, sir, thank you so very much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you. Keep doing the good work. All right, moving into consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're moving properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Ayes have it, motion carries. Moving us right into our ordinance second reading. Jane, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman.
Thank you.
As we discussed at the last meeting, this is a zoning ordinance amendment to add some additional definitions to the zoning ordinance for uses that we've had requested over the last six to eight months from people who want to come and open businesses in the community. We're trying to make it clearer so that they know the requirements, but we're also making it more robust so that we can properly advise them when they come to us instead of saying, well, the ordinance is silent on this matter. And so with that, we did reflect on the feedback that we received, and we removed food processing, so that's no longer included. And we did add additional standards to the towing and storage yard. So that will be a 20-foot setback from residential uses and some mitigation of mud and dust, as well as some screening requirements, additional screening requirements above and beyond what's required from other businesses. So, and then we also have the sign ordinance update for the Town Center District, because there's, as we've discussed, no current ordinance on the signs in the Town Center District. And we'd be adopting the DDA guidelines that they created in 2018.
What are some of the other? If you could, please, just for the general public.
Absolutely. I had it pulled up, and then I clicked to something else. So give me one moment. So we will be adding a definition for personal service establishment. That's something that's already included as a use, but we didn't have it defined. So that will include barber shops, beauty parlors, cosmetologists, massage providers, dry cleaning shops, dry cleaning establishments, electrical appliance repair, florists, automatic or self-service laundry, shoe repair shops, tailor or dressmaking shops, optical or watch repair, printing, processing, letter pressing, and other silk screening and lithographic services. So kind of those day-to-day services. As we mentioned, the towing service storage yard, and that's for private towing companies that want to open up and provide a storage yard for the cars that they tow, either after an accident or from being privately impounded. And then we have a rental hall definition, you know, assembly rental for sort of event. And then we have banquet facility, which is essentially a rental hall, but where liquor could be provided with a catering service that holds a liquor license. And then a truck depot, which we have kind of a truck terminal facility, but we don't have specifically a truck depot, which would be a place or building used for servicing and parking of trucks, earth-moving machinery and the like, which I think is a little more sensitive than simply a contractor storage yard, which is something that the zoning ordinance also addresses. So the banquet facility rental hall would be permitted in the B2 and the B3. And then the truck depot, the towing service storage yard would be special land uses in the industrial district, and then we would be adding nursing homes to the B1 district.
In that first section she read about the beauty parlors and things of that nature, was the tattoo parlor that we just, or is it not part of that same thing?
No, the tattoo parlor is a separate use that will remain a special land use in the B2 and B3 districts. These are personal service establishments, so things like the list I just read off, there won't be any room for misinterpretation that that would somehow include a tattoo parlor.
Okay, just, just the point. So a tattoo parlor is not a personal service thing?
Correct.
What is it classified as?
A tattoo parlor. There is a specific classification for a tattoo parlor.
I know.
Okay. Sir?
Yes, it's a quick question. I had noticed on the table, excuse me, for scheduled uses, food processing.
That's an error. I apologize.
So we should just strike that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And that's it, Mr. Mayor?
All right, move right along. You might as well stand right there. Under new business, please, item A.
Consider adoption of the zoning amendments for additional uses and definitions as well as sign standards for the Town Center District.
Wish your pleasure.
So move, Mr. Chair.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Item B, please.
Consider authorizing the Department of Public Works Director to enter into an agreement with MDOT to secure funding for the approved speed bumps and adopt the included resolution.
So move, Mr. Chair.
For a second? Support, for a second? Any discussion?
We have, uh.
Will you use an explanation? Just overview?
Just the brief one, and just what kind of money are we getting? Because I know we got some once before, or is this the same money? This is the same ones. Okay, so $87,000 is what we getting?
It's eighty.
Eighty? Oh, I gave him $7,000 more. I'm sorry.
So.
I was hopeful.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, to the viewer, audience, and to the audience here. What you have before you today is a contract that the MDOT Federal Highway Commission has required that the city sign off on any thousand dollars that they awarded back in November 2021 to put in about 36 speed bumps in locations that the police department had identified and got awarded for. And basically, they have already put the bid out, and the bid's been awarded. It's going through the procurement process now with the federal government. So we hoping to be able to start this process either late September or early October. They will be, we will be able to begin to put the speed bumps in.
And this is MDOT is doing it? Or they're?
This is federal. It's through MDOT, but it's the Federal Highway Commission. It's the federal.
And they're overseeing the whole project as relates to?
They did the bidding process, they did, they did the warrants and all that. All we're responsible for is getting the work done now, once they award the contract.
When you say get the, they award the contract to a company?
To a company.
So we're just going to oversee it?
We go oversee.
Yeah, that's why I just wanted to make sure you're clear with that.
Yeah.
Like, we're not doing the work.
Work, no.
Right. They're going to award?
Want the contract themselves.
And we're going to oversee the work. There you go. That's why I want to make sure we're clear on that.
Okay, one other thing, is there some sort of priority list? Because you know we're getting people all over the city who's saying, we need speed bumps. We need speed bumps.
So this was, the list was disseminated to me through the police department and those areas that we started in the field with our area.
With the same thing that you got from the police. Okay.
Right. Yeah, we went over them and discussed them in the council meeting over a year ago now, at least. And we know they could have changed, but we need about 500 speed bumps in the city.
We are already.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah, and all the streets are in your package.
I have a question.
Go ahead, please, Councilwoman Washington.
Because I know Meadow Lane have multiple times in the past spoke about speed bumps and them also even want to pay for it. Now, I don't actually see that street on here. So was that one of the, not the priority?
The police went out and did the survey for us, and they gave us what they felt was the priority. We are going back out for more money again. We're going to ask the feds for more money for speed bumps. What they gave us is what I submitted.
Oh, okay. So they deny, they deny or approve certain streets based off of?
They approved everything we gave them.
Okay, so was Meadow Lane one of those streets?
I can't speak to that, because that was on that list.
We'll have to just discuss and see if it's on that list, man.
Yeah, I know he did it based off of like a traffic study that he did, and then the complaints that he got in as it relates to. And this was done through the Chief of Police. And we actually had a whole diagram of other streets and all the stuff that, but we had to have the specific streets to the state so that the state in turn could put it on their map and award it.
Well, I just want to make sure that Meadow Lane is actually on that street, because that Meadow Lane, that whole, the club, the street, all of them have been pushing and pushing. They've came up here multiple times in regards to making sure that they get their speed bumps. They've been pushed as far as saying they'll pay for it themselves. That's how desperate they got.
I remember staring at that button. If it's not on that list, they got it. That's all they've submitted.
I do remember that, though.
Because I've said that a few times. So I just want to make sure that they not ignore that.
But it was after this process, though, Councilwoman. We've been going through this process for two years. So they wouldn't even let us spend the money until 2023. So we actually had awarded in 2021. So like last year, I remember when we were having those meetings back and forth with the block club about to paying for their street bumps. So it's a lot of streets that's going to be missed, unfortunately, because the city just don't have the money. We can't afford it. So we've been going out for grants to try to get the money. And then, Mr. Bibbison, you can explain to why citizens can't pay for their own street bumps.
Because it's a public role, and the public role belongs to the city.
Yeah, I remember that. I remember that.
No, I'm just saying for the general public. This wasn't for your edification. It's just for the general public is understanding that, you know, our average citizen, they just can't pay for, because it's really the state, the county, and the city. And we have to get permission from, obviously, in this case, the state.
We tried to use our Act 51 money, and they said no. That's how we wanted to go and get this, with the mayor's health and I. And for this, we wanted to go and get this much. He sent it to us, and we pursued.
Okay.
We working on it, though. We still trying to get more.
Like I said, we trying.
Make sure metal dealers at the top of the list.
Okay, yeah, because I, you know, you know, the fact that they hear that we have these speed bumps and that the streets, their street has not even, that they're being heard, that's the biggest thing for me.
I wouldn't say they weren't being heard, but the police did the survey, like the mayor said. They put it on the mapping system. They did, it's traffic involved and all that. So they picked what they felt was the worst areas they needed.
We definitely go get to them.
Yeah, please don't say they weren't hurt. They were hurt. It's just, you know, at this time, this is what the police felt. They're out there, patrolling the streets, and they see the speeders, and they know where everything is. I mean, we got them on Kyle out near Bergen, you know, areas that we know people are just, you know.
Okay.
Yeah. So it was, like I said, I've talked to our engineers, and we're talking with the feds now and trying to do a phase two and get more money.
Okay. All right.
We will make sure metal dealers on that list, man.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Just don't, don't let them feel like they weren't annoyed. I promise you.
All right. You said the list was in the package.
It's in the package.
This page, uh, I don't even know what the page is. What page is that?
Page one of the contract.
Right up to the request for.
Not in the estimated cost thing.
Right up to RFC, all the list of the streets are there.
Okay.
We probably want to just list those streets on the website.
Hey, they are, but I'll check again, but when we got awarded twenty twenty one, I sent him the word.
Yeah, I remember that, just up, just let's update it and then we'll have Troy put it on the access channel as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion carries, item C, please.
Consider authorizing the Director of DPS enter into an agreement. With the Wayne County Department of Public Services to maintain the storm water management system. In accordance with the drawing attached as Exhibit A and the terms of. Long-term maintenance plan attached as Exhibit B. And the Wayne County Storm Water Ordinance and Administrative Rules.
What's your pleasure?
So move, Mr. Chair.
For a second?
Second.
Give us explanation for just a quick overview exactly what this is, cause I know that we.
Yeah, I have the mic on.
Yeah, just speak.
I'm sorry.
Just direct yourself to the mic, there you go, go ahead.
To Mayor and Council, to the viewing audience and to the audience here. Uh, what this is, is when a site plan comes about, they have to measure their acreage in the rainfall. And if seeds a certain number, then they have to put it in a retention pot. And this particular area, this particular site, they had to put it in a retention pot. Once you put in that retention pot, you have to maintain it and keep it clean. Cause if water, you have to clean that and filter it out. So the county requires the city to enforce that ordinance. And we enforce that ordinance by the county submitting it to them. They bring it to me, I bring it to council and get it approved, and they give me a letter saying they will help, be held responsible and not hold the city home. Because if they don't maintain it, then the city has to go and clean it, they have to pay a fine.
Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion carries, item D, please.
Consider approval of tentative agreement. For a contract renewal between the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees. Local Union two nine zero point one three and the City of Inkster.
What's your pleasure?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, can we ask who, who represents, uh, us in this?
Director Beavis.
Also, he gets to tell us all the details.
And the H R director.
And the H R director.
She's running late, she texted me, said she was running late.
Okay, because, um, wasn't there something in here that said there were only like three different things that changed? Contract was just the same, except there was only?
Do you guys wanna speak to what the changes are?
So, the changes were, she added the federal holiday, which was June tenth. There's no more steps increased, that was one of the changes, it's a flat raise now. Other rates, and then the other changes were dealing with, uh, benefits and, um, leave time. And she highlighted those in the contract.
And removed the five dollar, five hundred dollar sign-on bonus?
They removed the five hundred dollar sign-on bonus and they took a zero the first year. So they raised it zero, five dollars, two percent, two percent.
Yeah, that's, that's in here too, but these are the only significant changes, that's what she highlighted.
And then the vacation time, when you get twenty five years, you get twenty five days.
You weren't getting that before? No?
I'm not in there.
But I'm just saying, that wasn't something before.
I mean, she just highlights to make sure that it was simplified.
Okay.
And our attorney has reviewed the contract and of course, the union is here today and representing.
Yeah, I see, I'm scared.
And they're representing as well. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion carries, item E, please. Yeah, you guys do good work, we thank you.
Absolutely.
We thank you, you guys do awesome work, keep up the good work, we're proud of you. All right, go ahead, item E, please.
Consider approving a resolution that set alternative meeting dates.
We're still in order, please, still in meeting, still in order, go ahead.
To set alternative meeting dates for the July and December Board of Review Meetings.
What's? I'm sorry, go ahead. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moving properly, second, any discussion?
What would those dates be?
Bernie, if you could, please just explain what Marwan is asking for.
So what he's asking for is a flexibility to change the date. Either a day before, a day after what's, um, already set by ordinance and charter.
And that won't be confusing for the people who, cause I know there's a low turnout sometimes because they don't actually know when what is happening.
Well, they're posted and.
Well, we post everything, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're getting the information, you know, so I'm just wondering.
We get that information out for sure.
Well, I'm just wondering if, um.
The assessor?
Yes, you know, just, is there any stipulation that say how far in advance he needs to change that date? So people will have the opportunity to acclimate themselves to that.
Yes, the assessor is very thorough about getting his dates out early. So he's, I don't, I don't envision that a week leading up to his, um. His assessment meetings that he would change it.
And these assessment meetings are only for his, his, his staff, not for the general public, what?
No, they are, they're Board of Review.
And changing it like that isn't, is not going to be a problem?
I mean, anything can become a problem, what you talking about?
We're supposed to be here to ferret that out.
Alternative dates, he said alternative dates for July and December, if needed.
If needed.
We can have him come before and, and explain, okay? Anything else? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Ayes have a motion carries. All right, item F, please.
Consider approval of a special event permit for the X series round ball classic. Basketball tournament at Brookside Park on August twenty sixth. From the hours of one through seven, the applicant is Michael Kato.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moving properly, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion carries, item G, please.
Consider approval of a street closure request. For a memorial slash vigil for the late Anthony Nick Jones. On Lehigh Street between Sylvia and Prince's Streets on August thirty first, twenty twenty three. Between the hours of one and three, Barbara Cooper is the applicant.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moving properly, second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion carries, item H, please.
Consider approval of a street closure request. For a family birthday cookout in, on Oakwood Street at Harrison on August twenty sixth and twenty seventh. From ten AM until ten PM each day, Don Hearn is the applicant.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Moving properly, second, any discussion?
Yeah, would this be considered an event since it's two days? And if so, an event packet or something, no?
It's just a street closure, they're not using city property.
Oh, but they still have an event, correct, or am I confusing this?
It's like a block party, they wanna do it for two days. Just close the street.
Okay.
Any others? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion carries. Last item, item I, please.
Consider approval of a special event permit for praise in the park at Brookside Park. On September eighth, twenty twenty three, from the hours of noon through nine PM. The applicant is Barbara Albert, she is president.
What's your pleasure? Go move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moving properly, second, any discussion?
Am I missing mine? Am I having difficulty?
Item I.
Cause the last thing I have is the, oh, it's in the, is it on the electronic copy as opposed to the hands out copy?
It's Don Hearn.
Where is this position?
It's not, it's not on there.
It's the very last.
Don Hearn was the very last.
I don't see who it's talking about.
A proposal for the praise. For praise in the park, in Brookside Park.
She probably, she probably didn't get it, cause it's not in mine either, but.
You got it electronic?
Yeah.
I got it in my packet.
You got it in your packet, or is that what you're looking at?
She talking about the documents, not.
Oh, the documents that was inside of that.
That's what we're talking about. Cause it's not in mine, right? Okay, just forward that to council, please, if we have any questions, we'll go from there. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have a motion carries. All right, moving into public participation, this is the time for the general public to address this body. Your name is called, please go into the mic, state your name clearly for the record. And then you will have three minutes to speak, all right? Eugene Moore? Yvonne Moore, I'm sorry, Yvonne Moore. I'm sorry, I just know Eugene Moore, I apologize, and it looks like Eugene, sorry, Yvonne.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and, um, all of our citizens of our proud city of Inkster. I'm coming up to tell you about our Inkster Task Force that presents our unity in the community's backpacks trafficking that we do every year. We're just asking you to come join us to help your students get their school supplies, get ready, they're gonna have clothing. We're gonna have health needs, anything that they needs to start the school year. Uh, we are looking for volunteers to help supervise some of the activities and the games during that time on Saturday. Which is this coming Saturday, the twenty sixth. We'll be at the Brooklyn Tito's Recreation Center at twenty twenty five Millabelle, and it will be from eleven AM to two PM. We're also asking if you would like to set up an activity for your child, for your child, for the children there. Or if you have a special activity, please contact Ms. Mabel Strowman. And, uh, or either myself, um, you can contact either one of us, you can call seven three four, seven two two, three seven three eight. We are still in need of some supplies, um, so if you generously would like to help contribute some more supplies, we are in need. We are gonna try and make sure that we give out at least a thousand to eleven hundred backpacks filled with supplies, so. We are just asking for your donations and your help, your support and your prayers for a successful year.
Awesome, keep up the good work, all right. Gloria J. Alexander?
I'm Gloria Alexander, I live on Lovehead Avenue here in Inkster. And I'd like to yield my three minutes to our spokesperson, Tony Sherrill.
All right, perfect, thank you so very much, please. Mr. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, please. I recently just started getting involved, coming to some of these meetings, because I, um, and I've lived in Inkster here since sixty six, my parents had. And, uh, you know, this, this is my city, I live right, grew up there. And although I've seen a lot of positive things, um, coming from the city, we got a lot of problems we still have to address. And I'm here to bring a light to a lot of the violence that's going on in some of these, uh, the projects. I live like two blocks over, they live the next block over, some of them are backed up to it. At twelve, one o'clock in the morning, even eleven o'clock, we got ducking. We're hitting automatic gunfire, it's, it's almost sound like it's a war zone. And when we call in, you know, we're told we got a car on the way. And we understand that Inkster is a, a small city, we got a force that's, you know, only so large and can only respond so fast. But by the time they get there, the people are either gone or they're dispersed. And, um, we don't get to hear what any results were, uh, as to, you know, what's going on, what have they found out? And we're, we're living with this, night after night after night after night. I was in my garage one night kicking the trash out at twelve, and all of a sudden gunfire goes off. And I'm ducking, I'm running, I shouldn't have to live like this. I pay my taxes, I'm a good citizen and my neighbors too, we keep our property up and we just, we're asking for help. You know, we know, and I applaud Mr. Aaron for, um, the work he's doing with the projects, but a lot more's gotta be done. And we need it now, we don't need it later, we don't need discussing, we need something now. And we gotta wait, well, we gotta wait till a bullet goes through a wall and someone's killed. You know, we don't want that kind of publicity, we don't want that to happen to anybody. So please, we, we need your help and we had a couple other things, we need code enforcement's help. When it comes to people taking care of their property, bushes overgrown where you can't even walk down the sidewalk. There's some places to be identified and we just need to get someone from code enforcement to show up or know when they're gonna show up. Because this is a hit and miss thing, if you're out there in the street and you see them, you can catch them, other than that. We have no way of, uh, finding out how we voice our concerns except for meetings like this. The other things were, you addressed the speed bumps and I'm hoping Burton Street is one of those, uh, one of those streets is on there, this is a thoroughfare.
Burton, man.
Yeah, I'm, I recently just got off a wheelchair where I got both my knees done and I'm okay, but I was in a wheelchair and I've been almost hit, I don't know how many times on that corner. You know, it's, it's, it's crazy and that's a bus route, that's a major bus route. I mean, I've had cars go one way and another way, just running those signs, those are the other issues that we got. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I remember, see, last year, when we had that shared the state patrols out there. And then we also had the sheriff's department there, that quieted things down quite a bit. And we're wondering, um, you don't wanna be a police state like that, but that may be what, what it takes, you know, to kinda get this under control. Because it's something that needs to be done right away, not later. So I hope you guys can, um, come up with something that can help us and communicate that to us, you know, so that we, you know what's going on. We wanna be in the dark and ducking, thank you.
Let's hold for one second, go ahead, Walter.
Thank you first for, um, um, coming with, with your concerns, okay, I'm Director Walter Cooper with, um, I'm the community director. So I have to write down your concerns, what I can say is the chief has had multiple plans. Uh, we actually just did an operation sweep, um, this past Saturday where we did, uh, seize guns and drugs and arrested approximately six people. Um, a- as you may know, and I don't wanna sugarcoat it, we are short staffed. But we do have right now five individuals in the police academy right now that will be graduating in December. So when we. I know you're saying that we need it right now, but help is on the way and our, our police chief, chief, he's on the best ability. He's working Saturdays, he's working Sundays, um, to make sure that these officers are out here, um. Make sure we getting off, all these guns and everything off the street, so I do wanna, uh, just say that he is working very, very hard to, to get it done. Um, and at the end of the meeting, I'll get your name and number and we can, as far as the ordinance is concerned, we have our ordinance supervisor here as well, Ms. Triplet. So. You're not being ignored, the city is not being ignored, we are working day in, day out, we're trying to get all of this taken care of so Inkster could be a safe city.
Yeah, I'm saying, this is a real life, we're ducking, you know, while people at home eating their dinner, we're ducking, yeah. And that's, 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 that's a great concern, I mean, you shouldn't have to live like.
And we can't, we, we, we can't say that we have identified where the problem is coming from. And we do have, um, we, we do have some really good intel and one of the individuals actually was part of that particular sweep that got caught up this weekend. But also too, we're working with the state and, um, the ATF is involved now just because of the automatic weapons that's involved. So, uh, the state police, the county, so they're all working in conjunction with also too, the FBI analysis, our group that we have out of C Detroit. That's working directly with us to help us overcome some of these things, so we're, we're definitely on top of it one hundred percent.
So you hear us.
Oh, no doubt about that, well, we hear the shots too, and, and know that, you know, some of our family, our family members are there and we're, we're, we're right there, so.
And add, add a little credence to what I was saying, I've got a neighbor that's like half a block from me, she's got a bullet hole in her door right now. And she's got, you know, young kids and, you know.
Yeah, we're not gonna tolerate it, we're not gonna tolerate it, we're, we're definitely open and, and as you were saying, as relates to being a police state, we understand that community policing. For us is a standard here in the city and we don't want, you know, just people coming from the outside as relates to the police just harassing.
Right.
Individuals at the same time, it does help mitigate some things, so.
But it justifies the debate, when it talks about saving lives.
Yes, sir, and that's what we're on right now, as it relates to safety is our number one priority, especially, uh, when it comes to our citizens.
If I'm from here, I'm not going. If I'm from here, I'm not going over.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And I'm ready.
So, we wanna make sure to, Officer Hall, we know that you're in housing, so make sure that you collaborate with Mr. Tony, please. Gina, please, with Mr. Tony as well, okay, and then Walter, please follow back up, and we wanna make sure that we're in conjunction with Inkster Housing, so that way we can all be talking together, that's why I kept alluding to when I was speaking with the president earlier about us having, uh, that community town hall meeting, so you guys can come, can kind of see what we're doing, we're all working and talking together, so.
Yeah, I wanna go to the front and say, hey, I gotta go out and get your help.
Please, yes, yes, sir, directly, yes, okay.
All right.
And we want you to be trusted and confident with that, and then as Councilman, Council, uh, Councilman Shaw would say, you see something, say something.
Well, I have faith, that's why I'm gonna get a talk, you know, I got faith in you guys, so.
One eight hundred, speak up is it, you know, you can be anonymous, we, we, you know, you, you have to tell us what's going on, and we're gonna get to it, okay? Thank you so very much, Mr. Tony, we really appreciate you, and know that we're, we're here for you one hundred percent.
I appreciate it, I'm, I'm, I'm just here to watch and every day to see.
Oh, yeah, well, we gonna, well, hopefully you've been seeing something over the weekend, so we, we working, okay? Uh, Mrs. Walker, did you wanna come up and now, just speak in regards to us as well, Catherine Walker? Yeah, did you wanna?
Yeah, this is my neighbor around here.
Yeah, I know the chair, I know I see you, yeah, yes, ma'am.
I hope Catherine Walker, I mean, I'm going to raise it, my family, like I said, I'm not going anywhere, I'm in my mom's house now, and she's right over there behind the, uh, park, the projects. I'm ducking, I'm rolling on the floor, I got a pallet on the floor, I can't keep running on the floor, jumping on the floor when I hear, I saw somebody was in my house, a gunshot, I know those AKAs. Boom, 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 boom. Twelve o'clock, one o'clock, three o'clock in the morning. I, we have a daycare, eight o'clock, one of the girls, the parents said, was that a gunshot? You know, I was out there, you say it's Saturday, I had my, my grandkid, and I did hear a boy say, get down or I shoot, I had to fly in the house with two kids. I had to flip it, and I got my bushes up to my fence, I cut them down, I had to keep them up so they won't see. They can't come over there, I don't wanna say anything because I don't wanna get the next. That's how scared we are over there.
Well, we with you, we gonna be over there until we get it solved.
That's how scared I am over there.
Yes, yeah.
And it's bad.
Yeah.
When you got four or five, you can't sit out, I kind of miss my yard, I don't sit out there, I can't sit in my yard, not in my driveway, in my backyard, because I'm scared of everything that's behind me. I even saw someone, they, they had a shootout, they were running down the street, they parked down the street and ran with the gun.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, you want me to report that, so I'll get the next, you know?
Well, just eight, eight hundred, speak up, it's anonymous, you don't have to tell us your name.
Now, when the police don't call you, say, what's your address?
Well, yes, we, 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 yeah, we, yeah, yeah, we, we heard, we heard that. We, we did, we, we've heard that, we heard that, yeah, we've heard that several times, I'm like, what are you guys doing, like, yeah, I get it, no doubt. Yeah, for sure, because they're gonna come right to, come right to your house, I get it, I, I get it.
I know why, I know why, I didn't hear why.
I, I can't let them know that.
Yeah, well, I, I got you.
I can't come home at night, you know, I'm busy.
I totally understand.
Because I think somebody or something will happen, you know?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, well, know, know that we're, we're definitely aware. Please come up, Officer Hall, please.
I have two houses in Inkster.
Yeah.
And I'm over my mom's house. I guess they're gonna run me back over there on car?
No, they ain't gonna run you nowhere, come on up here, speak into the mic, sir, please, state your name for the record too, for those at home.
Savannah Hall, Inkster Police Officer. Even when they want the information, probably you can get to them, this where it's at, that's it, you don't have to get them all the information, they're gonna ask, you don't have to, just so you know, okay? You don't have, no, you don't, if you're calling about a crime, you don't have to, no.
Remain anonymous.
Okay, now, thanks.
Remain anonymous, you don't have to say your name, don't have to say your address, none of that.
We don't know if we call, if they're there, they're, they're, no sirens, and that's what you're trying to do, so you can catch them?
Yeah, that's, 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 that is one thing that our officers do, we, we do like to come with no sirens, no lights, that's a better chance of the guys out there on the streets able to catch the people that's out there doing this.
Because I know Saturday, I heard it.
Yeah.
Or even you might think the police is not there, you see cars as well.
Well, I can't go down there, I'm here to rub and come back home, no, I ain't walking, I'm here, all right, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
All right, thank you again.
Yeah, we're gonna get results for you, I will be in direct contact with you as well. Gina, give him my number too, so Tony can have my number, okay? Thank you.
All right.
All right, I did see, yeah, and I noticed she was sitting here for a while, so let's have her come up first, Ms. Harris, please, yeah. State your name for the record, please.
Clint East Harris.
Ma'am.
Uh, Tromley Street, five two five Tromley, um, mayor, council. Um, first, I'm gonna start with, first, I want to thank you guys for hiring my daughter, thank you so much, I really appreciate it. The other thing is, um, I had a water main break at my house, who is it, Tony, Tony here?
Okay, oh, the cashier?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Um, she, um, I had a water main break at my house, now, my house is relatively new, it's a baby, it's, uh, twenty years old.
Okay.
But never had a problem, never, I'm on Tromley, I'm in like a little ravine. And I had a water main break, and first I must commend Jerome Staff, those guys worked so hard trying to get to that line. Um, it was so far down that they couldn't get it, and I think we had the guys, um, the contractors, they came with the bigger equipment the next day, and they finally got, it was like twenty-five feet down, I don't know what they did with that period drain thing, but, um, so my yard was tore up, it still is, um, they had to tear up my driveway, because they had to go across to where the fire hydrant is. But they came and my driveway was repoured, they leveled out the sand, but nothing else has happened. My question is this, I'm not complaining at all, um, but my understanding is that there is still a pinhole leak there, and I was told that next year it's gonna have to be torn up again. So, my question is, is that true, first of all? Um, as to whether, because I did see when they did it, uh, the, the ground was still wet, though they had reappeared, it was still wet, they said they believe it's a pinhole, and they may have to come back, so my question is, who do I contact, Jerome maybe, as to whether or not, uh, this is gonna have to be torn up again? Um, and if not, when can I expect that my front yard will be taken care of, which probably won't be until next year considering, you know, how things are now? Um, but it's on both sides of my driveway.
Well, you talked to the right person, so just make sure you guys talk directly, please call him and then.
I have his number on speed dial, so.
Yeah, yeah, and I know he's, yeah.
The other thing I wanna talk about, and this is, this is really, I've never had a problem with flooding in my basement, and, um, in the past year and a half, I think, uh, when we had the water main break, that's when my basement started flooding. When I would flush the toilet, I could hear my kitchen sink gurgle, and I knew that there was water coming in my basement, so. Then it got to the point, it only happened maybe once a month, now it's like every two weeks, and now it's to the point where I don't have to flush my toilet, somebody else can do it, and I'll go down there and there's water coming up in my basement. So normally I'll call Jerome's department, um, but normally it happens on the weekend, then I have to bother the police department, which I do feel like I'm bothering them when I have to call them to tell them that there's water in my basement. What happens is, I, I'm assuming you guys send a message out to those guys and get them to go out there and they blow out a line. My question is this, I know we're working on infrastructure, I, I commend you guys, I know it takes time to do that, but my thing is, I don't think I should have to call every time there's a gurgle, what if I'm not home? My basement's gonna be flooded, is there any way we can get a person that will go and blow out that line every Friday? Because we know it's gonna happen, if not, hire me, I'll do it, that, that, whenever you need it, one day a week, I'll go out there, just show me how to do it, and I'll blow the line out, because you know, on Tromley, I'm just a two, two block street.
You said it just started happening?
This started happening with, after the water main break.
Okay, so, talk to her, please, and then maybe some resolution, you can get over there and investigate and see exactly what the problem is and fix it? Okay.
Yeah, because as soon as they go and blow it out.
We just need to fix it.
And they're great, I mean, they'll go out there, they'll do it, they're knocking the door, and they'll say, are you clear, yeah, I'm clear, but I gotta clean this.
No, we gonna fix it.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect, the other thing is, I was gonna talk about the speed bumps, but, uh, now I have understanding of what you have to go through to do that, because my street is only two blocks long in all of Inkster, and I live in the little, the period drain is there. And I have seen in the wintertime, I saw a guy come through there so fast, he spun around and ended up in an empty lining story. My husband has seen guys take flight on that hump coming through there, we don't have sidewalks there, and, uh, my postman, they said they hate to take our route, because it's not safe. You know, and we do have elderly people there, we do have children there, so I was gonna ask for a speed bump, but I know I gotta get on this list now, and then we gotta get some more money for me to be able to do it, so, um, I will do that. Um, but other than that, that's all I had, I thank you guys for, um, listening to me.
Make sure we make a note of that, let me get some traffic detail over in that area, just to kind of.
And just to commend the police, um, we did have a guy running through our neighborhood, uh, that we stopped and, uh, I called the police, and they do, they came silently, they came through there, they talked to me, I waved them down, I told them where they went, I don't know if they ever got him or not, but he was up to no good, we do know that, that they were looking for, something about stabbing his wife or something like that, so. Yes, they do, they've done a great job, I know you're short staffed, I understand it totally, um, and believe me, I hate calling you guys, telling you that my basement is backed up, but.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Just to reiterate, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, uh, what was your address again?
Five two five Tromley.
Also, don't, don't, don't ever think that you're a bother, we're, we're, we're open twenty-four, seven, seven days a week, so.
I'm still back in the, I just.
All right, all right, let's, let's, let's be good, this session, thank you so much, all right. All right, and thank you so very much, all right, city clerk? Well, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I got Gabe and Barbara that came in last. Sorry about that, yeah, Gabe and Barbara. All I got is the two. Yeah. Let's go with, let's go with Mother Cooper. Sorry about that, guys, I know the day it came, I'm a little bit there.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
And the citizens of Inkster. First off, I would like to thank everyone who supported the Goodfellas on Friday for our dinners, this was great, and, uh, we still accepting donations, uh, for all of you all that came out and helped us, thank you so much, we appreciate it. Um, reminders, and I put some over there, our pancake breakfast is October the twenty-first, from eight to noon at Booker Dozier Recreational Complex. We want everyone to come out and continue to support the Goodfellas, no child without a Christmas. And secondly, I'd like to thank you all for approving, uh, for the visual for my cousin, uh, Anthony Nick Jones on August the thirty-first. Thank you all so much, our family, really appreciates that, and we do have the flyers for anyone that would like a flyer.
If you could, please, give us some, so we'll have, let's move over in the hall, please. And, and Nick was a great guy, great dude.
Fantastic guy.
Thank you very much.
Come out and show unity in the community on August the thirty-first from one to three, and, uh, we haven't heard anything, uh, about it, but Crime Stoppers, one eight hundred, speak up. Somebody knows something of what happened on August the thirty-first, uh, twenty nineteen, and, um, we want someone to be held accountable for what they did to Nick. And then also I have ads for the Goodfellow Papers, and I want everybody, our paper was fantastic last year, and, um, Denise Champagne did an excellent job, that was the best paper I'd ever seen, and, uh, thank you. And, uh, that's it, that's it, Gabe, you wanna come on and say?
This is, this sweet lady, this is my boss, like. Okay, I, I did put a slip in there, bro.
Yes, sir, I saw it, yes, sir.
So, uh, is that, I'm on that slip, or I'm a little bit on her slip?
I just got up here faster than you.
She came in after.
Yes, I did, and he said, Barbara and Gabe, and I said, here's my chance.
Say it's the Goodfellas, so you're supposed to talk about the same thing.
She said all she want, you know, about the Goodfellas, but you know, our beautification, you know, uh, Saturday, uh, uh, we, we having to clean up dumpsters, this coming Saturday.
Oh, good.
At different loc- different locations. Most of all, I said, hello, fellas, how y'all doing? Yeah, I love y'all, you know, okay, beautification, Booker Dozier Rec, Booker Dozier Rec Complex. Okay, we're going to have the dumpster, we're gonna trash, trash bags, we have gloves and pickup tubes and all that, so, so come on on out there, okay? Uh, Booker Dozier, uh, from nine, okay, two, two o'clock, okay? The, the, the dumpster, uh, uh, location, we got Westwood Park, Stormy East of John Daly, uh, Wheatley Park at Penn and Beach Daly, Lamone Park at Middle Belt and Pine, and Booker Dozier Rec Complex, uh, uh, on, on Middle Belt. Twenty, uh, twenty-five, you know, we talk about a lot of things, it's having our community and all that, there's a saying, you know, nip it in the bud, any program that's out there trying to, you know, help young folks, be block club, church organizations, you know, any organization that can reach these young folks, and get them on the right road, so as they grow up and all that, they won't detour into the wrong roads. So I say this, if y'all know anything, or anything is going on for young folks in our community, work with it, spend a little time, get the young folks thinking the right way, because they're growing up, gonna be grown men, we want them to be in the right attitude, so they do the right things. And you know, it's a saying that, you know, we all do a little bit, a whole lot of us, we can get some positive things done. Now, you know, and I, and, you know you stole that from, I'm gonna tell you what it was, you know, and I, I heard you say it one time, yeah, yeah, you know, it's saying, ask not, ask not, ask not, ask not what your city can do for you, but what you can do for your city. And that's we should, we put that question to everyone, and we can do a little bit, a whole lot, and we get a whole lot done, so. And, 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 and we, 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 we did, we doing good for our money, City of Inkster doing good for our money. We gotta spend a little time with our children, coming up, any youth program, block club, be involved in the positivity things, and always look after the old folks too. So we just, we can do it.
This is true.
We just gotta get out there and do it, love y'all.
Love you too, all right, city clerk?
Yes, I'd like to talk about, um, our August primary, it was certified last week. Thank you, ladies, I'd like to thank everybody that participated in the election as an inspector or as support, um, you did a fantastic job, thank you. And anyone interested in running for the library board, come see us at the clerk's office. And that's it.
All right, what's business? Got it. All right, chief?
Yes, we did receive a draft of the audit, so they're looking at some different things, they're reviewing the audit right now, but we did receive a draft, so hopefully next week they'll be done with the review, and then we can release it.
All right, all right. Anything, all right? Councilwoman Weller?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, several weeks ago, um, we approached a subject regarding the voting process here in the city of Inkster, because the state sent down some information that they wanted us to address, and it just sort of died in the water. But the council is the election commission, according to the charter. So I'm asking the chairman, which would be Mayor Protem, to set up some sort of meeting and invite these people here to that meeting to discuss the situations or the concerns they brought up.
Just for point of clarification, the council is the elections commission?
No.
Okay.
It says so in the charter, you read the charter, it says so.
Okay.
You got a charter, I'll read it to you right now.
Show me that one too.
Okay.
I know I was the chair for a while as well, but, okay, but I know that we are the, the clerk's, the clerk's boss.
Right, but in either case, they brought the information to us and it came from the state.
Okay.
And I don't think we should just ignore it, if there's a concern, we should attempt to address and correct.
It came from the state of Michigan?
Yes, these people were from the, um.
They work for the state?
Special interest.
Yeah, that's, this was, this will be clear, so it was a special interest group? Or was it the state of Michigan?
I got, no, I put my computer away, but I got an email from the, uh, that the state had brought this down. But either way, shouldn't we find out and address it in some fashion, why are we just ignoring it?
Yeah, I know that you guys have brought it before the council, uh, unfortunately I wasn't at that particular meeting, um, but as it relates to the information, could you send that to me?
Sure.
And then I can follow up, and then we can go from there, I'll talk with Mayor Protem as it relates to her, of course, she is the elections chairperson, so it should go through her, and then we go from there.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, Councilwoman Washington?
I just have one thing, I just want to make, uh, code enforcement aware about, um, the building right there on Henry Rough and Oakwood, the, um, two doors. the um, two doors, it's like, um, they have boards on them, the two boards are. Oh, you got it? Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, she's on it, so I don't have anything else.
Councilman Shaw?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just have, uh, just one quick thing, uh, just a question about the water meters. I mean, where, where are we with the discussion concerning water meters, or has anything come up from it?
Please, sir.
The finance committee is meeting now, working out logistics on the financial end. I got the, um, contractor stuff emailed to me today and forwarded to the city attorney for a three year.
Now, moving along. Now, is there any, if this doesn't pan out, or have, is there any other companies that we can look at, or is this the only company that does this?
Well, we, we not gonna say it not gonna pan out.
No, 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 I'm just, you know, just hypothetically.
Make sure it works for the city, because their state side. Any other company I look at, it's gonna be out the country. And we don't wanna go that route again.
So you say.
Talks with other cities like Westland, Dearborn, Dearborn now is talking to Mueller, because they were looking at meters coming from Israel, so I'm not trying to go that route, I'm trying to make this happen.
Now, and also, Mr. Chair, with, with the, with the GFL, uh, I, I'm, I don't know what, what's going on with them, uh, how they're not responding, um, to trash pickup. Now, is there anything that, uh, any resolution from the things in which we put out, uh, concerning GFL, any, you know, recourse or anything like that that has, has, you know, transpired?
Just answer that, please.
We keep a daily log on information from GFL, and GFL is going through a turmoil right now of changing over its administration, but we keep a log of everything, and we, when we get enough information, we forward it to the attorney, it forwards an email to their attorney. So they're being put on record. And, and they, at the cost for it in the contract.
Right, yeah, so our next step, I know that we did already formulate a letter to them already as it relates to the past issues that they've just had over this past year since we renewed their contract.
Right.
But, um, speaking to the councilman's point as it relates to, um, again, like, you know, fines, you know, stuff, stuff like that.
That right now.
Okay, so that's the next, that's the next, that's the next step, as it relates to non-payments and, and things of that nature. It did come to our attention also, too, that they're not charging us for recycling with the blue cans anymore, and they're just dumping the blue cans and the gray cans in the same trash hall.
I'm dealing with that issue now. I, I'm dealing with that issue today.
Okay, well, you know, and let me, let me just say this, it's not a GFL, uh, issue, um, for the most part. Um, when we were talking to GFL, as they go through our trash, most of our residents are using the blue cans as regular trash receptacles. So they're not separating.
They're not putting the correct.
So they're not putting.
Items in the recycle can.
So, so it's not a, it's not the trash haulers issue, it's the general population within our community's issue. So we want to make sure that we're clear on that, you know, we lay blame where blame is.
Right, because they did forward an email to me and the mayor, let us know. And the treasurer, they let us know, they hey, your residents are combining putting compost, putting trash in their compost can.
Yeah, and I, and I, and I see that.
The regular garbage and the recycled containers.
We, man, we're, we're sorry, man, we're, we're, we're in order, so I, I hear you, but we, 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 we're in order right now. So as it relates.
I got the video you sent me, and I'm addressing that issue now.
Yeah, for, for certain, uh, and then too, you know, as it, as it relates to, you know, the, the recycling, if, you know, I mean, because that's something that's good for the world. Right? So we need to probably have some educational stuff with GFL coming out, and maybe doing some type of training.
Having some town hall meetings.
And then too, maybe even some incentives. I know that in other communities across the country, you know, they're actually using the recyclable stuff and, and turn, changing it into mulch and other stuff that they're using for.
I can talk to them about that.
Feed and stuff like that within, you know, other, other communities that's going into other, you know, creating other.
I got you.
Economic opportunities, right?
Yes, sir.
So maybe some initiative, some incentive for us to make sure it is happening.
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay.
And I did see, you know, with the concern that you, you were talking about with the, uh, recycling bin and people putting, you know, brush into the recycling bin. I mean, I, I mean, it's, you know, I understand that where the blame has to go. But I also, you know, Mr. Chair, is that, you know, GFL, you know, always coming up with some kind of situation, they in turmoil, or this.
Excuses.
You know, last time it was just, you know, we had some more excuses about, you know, they didn't have the crews, and you know, it's just things after, you know, another with them, so. I just, you know, we hope that we will make sure, and just go around with this contract, that we end up putting the clamps, you know, on GFL where it needs to be, you know, and that we can get the uh, recoup from things from the contract that we rightfully do. So, you know, that's just my thoughts on that, Mr. Chair.
I would say this, Councilman Shaw, enter the body, the contract that we gave them this year was very specific. I would commend Attorney Jones, he did an excellent job on drilling down on the violations in the city. So we can't go after them and get money, so we are pursuing that avenue.
Yes, sir.
And we do have an out clause that won't cost us anything, so yeah, again, to the attorney, great job.
Right. I really appreciate that. And just the last thing that I have, I just want to, to, uh, you know, Mr. Mr. Hall may mention about how that we can end up not having to say our name and that address or what have you when we call in to the police department. And I just want to read something to, to my people here, is that, you know, pride, I mean, my, my residents, I'm sorry. I get into that, you know, type, my people type stuff, but, uh, pride. You know, the definition of pride is a feeling of deep pleasure or satisfaction derived from one's own accomplishment. And I think that, you know, with that, is that Inkster has a lot of pride. We have pride in this city. So when you hear me say, if you hear something, see something, say something, I'm saying that because of the pride that we have here in the City of Inkster. And we are some prideful people. And this is not a negative type of pride of, you know, arrogance, but the pride that we have in our community, in our neighborhood, for our children, for our mothers, for our sons and for our daughters. We have to continue that pride, that strong, I, I wanted to say Viking pride.
You can say that. We got some bulldogs in the house, you can say Viking pride.
But just to give you an example of. Just to give you an example of the pride that we ought to have in the City of Inkster. This is a beautiful city, and we have some great and strong people here in this city. So I want us to continue to keep our heads up, and knowing that we can take back our neighborhoods. We can. We can. I said, we can. And that is with that pride, that Inkster pride. We want to make things happen, we keep our head up, we think about that Inkster pride. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. I wanted to go on, but that's all I have.
I'm gonna say preach, preach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would just like to take the hell to Mrs. Moore and the housing, and my, uh, staff at the National Christian Action. We took a group of kids to, name of that place, I just can't, first time I ever been there in my life, uh, Missy Adventure. It was a wonderful trip, some, uh, wonderful trip. We, uh, had lots of fun. I just want to thank housing and Mrs. Moore and her group for organizing that with the National Christian Action. The trip was very successful. I think some of the things that we look at, and I'm standing here, because I know I won't be, I ain't got long to go for council, but I just want to say this. But don't you ever, don't you ever get it twisted, that I'm leaving this community, okay? Because I, I can do some great thing without being on council. And I'm gonna say to people that, you know, we talk about violence. I was so proud, and, and, and I was happy to see so many people during the helicopter raid, well, I call it the helicopter raid, and, and all the police is and stuff, they were looking for criminals, okay? And the people, they didn't go in their house, lock their doors, and, and, oh, they came out, they come out there, and I, I ain't gonna say whatever, they were sitting on the side of the porch and stuff like that. People took charge of the, and it's over there in District One and, and, uh, Three, I have to say, they was on charge. They was looking everywhere, okay? Police dogs, everything else. They got them, I think they got them, I think the chief told me they got them. But I say that to say this, okay? You know, sometimes it's valuable, a lot of times in life, and I know when I was a kid coming up, okay? We watched our neighborhoods. When I, where I lived there over there, and Demi, you ain't come there doing nothing. Okay, because we taught the young people that were over there how to look out for their communities. And I'm not saying that battering anybody, but what I'm saying is, Inkster got to go back to its old rules, okay? Watching their own neighborhoods, okay? You, you got some good men out there. Off the hall, I take my hat off to them beachin' every day, and I praise for them, but I tell you. And, and then I seen, last time I prayed for them, I seen him, he had about three big guys about like that with him, and he was little bitty, something like that. Something finna, something finna get done, you know? But. Let me say this. Okay, I, I, since I've been in this city, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have to say it. You know, all I hear people talk about marijuana, and, and, and building this and building that, okay? But sometime I wonder, what happened to them times? When I got out there and stand on the corner and collect money from people to buy baseball bats and, and uniforms and, and basketball, and fix up the basketball court when Booker Doja was here. You know, we had people come out and volunteer to be, uh, coaches and various things like that. I'm, I, what happened to all of that? Okay? So I want to leave that with you, and I want you to, to understand that, okay? I, I've been, I've been working a lot of times as a councilperson. I got out there, I had to work many nights, Mr. Mayor, out there working with people, and, and that, and, and if I bring one little lady here, she'll tell you, she said, that man got this heart, he got this community at heart. But then when I see people come and, and, you know, and complain, now, I'm just saying this, and you complain about your neighborhood, sometime it always be an explanation, Mr. Mayor, that people don't, they, they don't want to find out. Because I can tell you, I can name councilpeople, people in the community, doors are always open trying to, to, to get the, get the job done. You know, you hear Councilman Shaw say, say some, see something, you understand? If you see things going on, I say, if you see thing going on in your neighborhood, do something about it. You see what I'm saying? And I'm proud of a lot of people that's in Inkster. Uh, I, I was just saving that, but I, I, I'll save a lot of it when I get ready to dismiss myself off this council, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm just hoping that the people, the success of the people that's gonna take this place over and get out here and work with the people, because you got some good people in, in Inkster. And don't, and don't get it twisted, you got some rotten ones in here, too. You see what I'm saying? So once we the good people get there, moving them rotten people out there, Inkster gonna be the greatest place in the world. I was born and raised here, and I don't run from nobody. So I'm just saying that, and I want all of you to know, you know, start building up this gracious. See, the most people that you see out there, the majority of the people that you see out there shooting, they come out their house. Don't know what they shooting at, but they shooting. You see what I'm saying? Because it's a habit that they have. You know, I know we got crime, Mr. Mayor, I know people come in here and shoot up, try to shoot up neighborhood, but the majority of the, the shooting that you hear at nighttime in Lamone Garden and over in this stuff, there's some fools just coming out top. And that's what it's about.
But we gonna catch them.
You know, but they getting caught. A lot of them getting caught. A lot of them getting caught, ain't no going to get, they getting caught.
No doubt.
They getting caught. So I, I just wanted to say that to each and every last one of you, you know, you, you, we need, we, we need to tighten up with some unity, some serious unity, okay? Inkster is a great place to be. Inkster's not a bad place to be, but you got some bad people in it, so therefore eliminate them. You see what I'm saying? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, allowing me the opportunity to talk, okay? And if I don't get a chance to tell you, it's been a pleasure working with you.
All right, sir.
Amen.
All right. Councilman Shaw?
Yo, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanted to say to DPS and to Code Enforcement, thank you for bearing with me and all the messages and correspondence that you receiving from me on a daily basis, if not hourly basis. Um, and just thank you for the status updates and the replies, and just to the citizens as well. I know running into different citizens, when they said they've called Code Enforcement or DPS and they can't get through, a lot of times it's something as simple as just confirming what telephone number that the residents have, because over time, numbers change, and in the calendar it might say one thing, but due to whatever circumstances might be, we may have updated it, so. Um, just to the residents, just confirm that you do have the correct phone numbers, because if we've been going through this, once they get the correct numbers, they're good on being able to get in contact with someone. And please, just leave a detailed but concise voicemail, don't just say, we got a problem on Patterson Court, and hang the phone up. Because then that just kind of delays the process and trying to figure out who they're getting back in touch with and what the actual problem is. I've been around Code Enforcement where they've checked those voicemails, and we went out the same day to assess the situation. So I just wanted to remind, remind everyone to be mindful of that, and thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mayor Protem. All right, call for a adjournment.
Second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Everybody say thank you, stay.